Hey y'all, it's 5:02, we're gonna go ahead and start the meeting. First thing on the agenda is old business, then we're gonna table that. So you all can wait till another time for that one, and then you all have a minute to look over the minutes so we can approve those.
I make a motion to approve them in a second.
It's been moved as second, we approve the minutes with the table and discussion one, on your favor. Uh, opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to new business, we have Ms. Kelly Sider who's gonna come present to us to make naming of the city street.
Thank y'all for letting me come today. And this idea today comes from a place of community pride and the desire to highlight the spirit of our students. And it's more than just a street sign. This is gonna bring unity. So I am proposing that we change Bradley Avenue, which runs from the corner of High School Drive, and then goes around and circles to North Street. So the only actual address on this will be at the New Panther Tennis Courts, but I feel like this could really bring, um, this could make a huge impact for our community. And so I do have full support, well, that we're at the meeting, of the school board. I went a couple weeks ago, proposed to them, they were thrilled. So I hope y'all take into consideration and think this would be a great idea too. Do y'all have any questions? Do we, does city council, how does that work? Should we vote it?
Just like we did Neil Rider Trail. We voted and then it...
It goes to council.
Right, okay. Then it goes to the council. This one honestly was easy to change because they only had permission of just the school board, due to the fact that there's no other address on there. And David was going over to give the tennis courts an address, and so I'm like, what's the name of that street? I didn't even realize. And I thought, what a great opportunity for us to show, you know, our school, how much we, you know, support them, so.
Well, in the spirit of being a graduate, I make a motion that we change the name to Panther Avenue.
Second.
Before motion is second, does anyone from the floor have any comments? This is a public. Okay.
Don't point out.
She made a motion in the second.
It's been moved in the second, on your favor. May's. Motion carried.
Thank y'all. When's it going up? You don't know how you put it up today?
So I think technically it goes in front of the city council. The resolution says it's, um, it's approved prior to October 1, then it goes into effect January 1, the next January, it's approved after October 1. It would be the next, so it'd be January 2027. Although, um, in looking at, at past, um, street renames, renaming procedures, it looks like the council has waived that additional waiting period for good cause. So there have been times they waived it, it would be up to the council.
Good cause.
Surely, since they have...
Moving on to 601 North Vine Street, Mr. and Mrs. Callaway? Okay, where Mr. Callaway?
Try to get her a picture of it. So if you have a plan in front of you, I'm there of a plot that is at North Vine Street. It's where several, for many, many years, there's Oracle Feed and Fertilizer Company. My wife's parents owned Oracle Feed and Fertilizer. Before they owned it, her grandparents had it, and so it's been a family business for a long time. And they closed the doors about 28 years ago, it just grew up and became an isle. And so trying to carry on the family legacy, we decided we wanna try to put a business there. So we had the land cleared, and we're hoping to put a boat and RV storage in that spot. And you can see from the drawings kinda how we got it laid out with, with your guys' approval. It all depends on your approval. But right now, the, the land, part of it is decided, um, it is zoned as C2, and part of it is zoned as I2. So we're petitioning you guys to have it just a one zoning, make it all commercial, make it all C2. And if you guys approve that part of it, we're also asking for variance on some of the setbacks. If we can have a variance of 10, 10 feet all the way around the property, that allows us to kinda spread things out and gives more room for turning radius and car, and trucks to back boats and RVs, without hitting buildings, without hitting each other. And so, and that's what we're proposing to, to you guys today. Open for questions.
So on your, um, on this drawing?
Yes ma'am.
Lot 15, lot 16, that's the industrial lot?
It is, can I look at you? I have it on my phone, but it's small. That citywide utility easement is, where that Clay Street. Everything to the, to the left or west of Clay Street is zoned industrial, and everything east of that is zoned commercial.
So what effect does this have on industrial people?
I can't say, do you know? I mean, there's, there's no industrial, there's no, no other businesses there. There's a railroad track that separates us from Anthony Force Products. And to my knowledge, I don't know if it had any effect on them whatsoever.
So before, when we've had something like this presented, which was out at Harvey Couch?
Yes ma'am.
We were told by the economic development that we don't have enough industrial as it is, which this is part of it, to be changing it?
Yes ma'am.
And so, uh, that's, that's one of my main problems, is that can you not fit it all on the commercial side?
No ma'am, not. I mean, you have to draw, and you see how much we can get on the commercial side. And the other, if it's not rezoned, it'll just stay dormant.
Whose residence is that?
It's a future residence, it's not a residence yet. It's gonna, it's a residence, we're gonna build for some, a caretaker to live there and keep an eye on everything for us, just to watch stuff. So it's, it's not a permanent, it's not a residence right now. It's a future, it's in the plans to have a future dwelling there for a caretaker.
What kind of dwelling?
Just a single home.
Is it gonna be a mobile home?
No. No, a permanent structure.
So, is there some, uh, thing that I'm missing about a residence being in a...
Industrial.
Industrial and commercial area?
The residence isn't in the industrial, resident will be in commercial.
Can it be in commercial?
Commercial allows for residences.
Okay. And so with this lot 16 up here, that runs with McNeil Street, you want your copy?
I'm gonna try to lay it on my phone.
There's an extra copy right here, you can look at it in full size.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, so that lot 16, can you not, um, that whole side there, can you not use that whole side for your...
I don't own lot 16.
Who owns lot 16?
There's a, there's a dwelling on, on lot 16. It was, uh, back when they had the old, when my wife's grandparents owned Oracle Feed, it was a manager's house. Um, and since we've, we've zoned, we've sold that portion of the land, and there's a residence over there.
So you sold this front park?
So lot 16 is not part of yours?
It's not part of ours, no ma'am.
So what's on there now?
Just a house.
There's a house on there?
Yes.
Somebody living in it?
Yes.
What do they think about this going right next door to them?
We've talked about them, and on Monday night, the city council has gone to vote to abandon Clay Street, 'cause it hasn't been cared for by the city, haven't managed.
They're gonna vote for it, or they're gonna listen to it?
They're supposed to propose to vote for it, to abandon it, 'cause it's never been taken care of or kept by the city in years. And so they're gonna abandon it, and we've talked to those residents, and they don't have a problem with that at all.
I've explained to them also that they both have RV storage, and they're completely happy with it.
Well, I understand that the people you've talked to may be happy with it, but people who live industry are not gonna be happy with that.
Okay.
That's just me. I'm just one.
Okay.
Is somebody currently using Clay Street at all? I mean, I know the city's not... Is Anthony Ford's?
Anthony, it's Anthony Timberland's and Anthony Oak Flooring, Anthony Force is not eligible at work.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. But yes, we've utilized it. And with the city not keeping it up, it's not affected us negatively. You know, we just use four-wheel-drive trucks, loaders, forklifts, things like that anyway, but we also cross through there. We, why are you shaking your head? We've been driving through there, we've been asked about this. We're fine with if they wanna rezone, we don't have any issues with that, but we do own a lot that butts up to the house, and we are against Clay Street being abandoned, and we are, if, if the city's gonna abandon it, we would like to take it over. I don't know why somebody that's just coming in will be able to take advantage of it. We've been, Parquet Flooring was there, I don't know, 75, 80 years, if not longer than that. We took over that business, otherwise it would be nothing there. Peace Flooring, also do sawmill, but it's been taken over by Anthony as well. So, you know, we're, we're paying a lot of taxes back there, keeping a lot of people employed, so we would, we would like to keep Clay Street.
Just to clarify about the, the Clay Street abandonment, that, that is an issue I believe that's gonna be on the agenda for the council meeting, for consideration. There's state law that controls who, where that land goes to if the city is to abandon.
But it hasn't been voted for or against?
No, it is not, no. But, but ultimately, who ends up with that? If, if the city council chooses to abandon that, it's dictated by state law. It essentially goes to the abutting landowners, which in this case, it would, I believe y'all own on both sides of it, except for part of lot 16.
Yes.
That whole part, so if the city did abandon it, it would, it would go to the, the cowboys.
Yes. It's a 40-foot wide street, so 20 of it, for the, the two lots that butt up to it, would get 20 more feet of property, get half the road.
And if it's not abandoned, then what? If they vote against that?
It stays as is.
Stays as is.
I'm sorry. Like I said, for 28 years, it has grown up. And back in January, February, we hired Brent Roberson to start clearing. And I can show you old pictures from satellite. I am shocked that you've been able to drive through there.
You couldn't drive through it.
Because these treatment, 28 years of growth. So I, I feel like, after we spent the money to get it cleared, and now that we're trying to make this better for the community and for Magnolia, I feel like all of a sudden you're trying to say, oh, we use that land. And I'm just, it's frustrating. And, and one other thing I'd like to say, we have not announced this, but we are, we are very close to signing the dotted line, but our goal is to have a very, very nice, safe laundromat on Vine Street, so that...
It doesn't affect the zone at all?
It doesn't affect this, but I'm just saying, you're talking about all the revenue for the city. We're trying to make the city better too. And I just, it's just frustrating.
It was so grown up with trees. You cannot drive through there at all.
I appreciate that, but y'all's lack of due diligence prior to investing the money to see about, you know, developing it, you know, that's nothing on us. We have used the road. If I need to go back and get, you know, old employees that have been there for a long time to come up here and make an affidavit saying that, I can.
Is there a road on the other side of the river?
Okay, we're gonna move forward with our, with that conversation. Where everyone's clear that Anthony Oak Flooring is against it, and we understand your reasons as well, as well as you two have voted for it. Does the community have any more questions?
We need to also keep into consideration that it, we don't have that much industrial, designated industrial space.
David, I do have a question in regards to the railroad, about the drainage work. Could you kinda elaborate on that a little bit?
So in the southwest corner of all of this property, it's kinda the collection area where all the water drains to. But all of that is on the railroad property? And so you have to get permission from the railroad before you can do any type of work. Andy Franks, who is our city engineer, dealing with anything draining, he has a call into the railroad. We're trying to figure out exactly where those drainage ditches end, uh, to get rid of that water. We would like to do some exploratory digging and cleaning of culverts, but until we get the permission from the railroad, we can't. So he's in the process of working on it.
So would this, would the Callaways have to wait pending that, with, with their trying to put in that location?
So, the question that was brought up was the drainage of the potential, all of the structures going on there. Andy did some research back, at one time, there was roughly 28,000 square feet of roof on that property. With the Callaways' proposed, um, idea, it puts it down to around 14,000, 15,000. He doesn't believe there's gonna be a drainage issue, but we want to try to make sure that the drainage that is there is cleaned out so that it doesn't cause any problems.
So, um, I was noting in, uh, section 60103, where, uh, commercial districts are supposed to have, it's supposed to be like for retail, office, and business needs? Is this considered that?
So I lumped that in there because, um, mini storage was located in a C2. And if you go toward the very end of that listing, it says anything similar. That's why I put RV into the, I thought it was allowed for a C2. It's not allowed in an I2.
Right.
If the city council does not vote this in, Jennifer, basically, none of this matters, correct? Or do they have to have our vote before they could vote?
So what's in front of the planning commission at this moment is rezoning?
Rezoning, correct.
And variance.
A setback.
And variance for setbacks, right? And I sup, I suppose the combined, the parcels or the lots into one, although I, I don't, is that in front of the council, or is that something?
That was on the list.
But I'm saying, does all of that hinge off of if Clay Street's gonna be abandoned or not?
Not to my knowledge, I mean, that, that ultimately would be, um, that ultimately would be a fact question. From a legal standpoint, um, this could be rezoned, variances could be granted, the lots could be combined, um, and it could still be used to, to the tolerance of the land, you know, as, as to however y'all wanted to plan and develop it within, within the laws and the rules. Even if the council ultimately said that they weren't gonna abandon the street, it would just be working around the street right away.
You said you want to put it there, but how is this gonna be able to fit the city?
Tax dollars? Revenue? I mean, we're making revenue, we make money off this, paying taxes on it. Our property taxes will go up, 'cause we have the structures on it, have the business on it, we'll be paying more property taxes. We'll be having income, paying taxes on our income. It's giving residents who live in, in city, developed areas, city areas, who don't have a place to park their, their boat and RV, a place they can park it without being an isle for their neighbors or on their streets or anything else. Be a convenience for the residents.
Don't we currently already have a storage going towards the jail? Man, I know that has no variance, but I'm just saying, don't...
There is one out there, yes.
So you're stating that if you, if we don't vote in favor of this, you're not gonna be able to move forward with your plans, your business plans? Or could you move forward with part of it, or it's like a all or nothing?
We'll, we'll move forward with our, our laundromat, 'cause it doesn't, it just doesn't affect that at all. But we will not move forward.
With the RV?
No, we're not.
So you can't put any, uh, any RV storage over there on that side?
I could get a few lots, um, west of the Clay Street, but honestly, it's, it's not, it's not gonna be cost-effective to have that few lots. It'd just take us too long to, to pay it back and pay off, pay off.
What's the total acreage on that side?
Almost four acres, 3.8.
Now, that's total acreage.
Oh, on that side of the street? I don't know, I don't know. I'm sorry, I don't have that, I don't have it broken down per side of the street.
I don't know, I'm having a hard time changing that from industrial to commercial. Where, how close are you to residences around there?
Uh, we're not close to the residents yet.
Not on Vine? There aren't any residences on Vine?
Oh, on Vine Street? There are, I'm not sure.
'Cause it runs, runs along part of your property? Just asking.
You have that one on lot 16. And that's, that's the only residence that I'm aware of on Vine Street that's close to us. There may be, there may be a couple across the street from lot 16. They're on the corner of McNeil and Vine. Maybe a house there and a house just north of it. Where directly across from us is Hollentworth Body Shop, and used to be Shan Hotel, right there. On the other side of Garland Street, there's Couch Body Shop. There's businesses all, all around us.
How is McNeil Street?
On the, the south of McNeil is Anthony, um, and that's the only property there, around us on McNeil. Continue west on McNeil, you hit the railroad tracks and cross railroad tracks, and it's the flooring facility.
For this particular area, is this the only, uh, industrial part that's on this, that's not being used at the time, David? The one that they currently own? I mean, what they have in there? Like, if, if he didn't use it for, like, she's worried about the industrial part of it. If he doesn't sell it, I mean, it's just gonna keep sitting there?
We won't sell it, it'll just grow back up.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying, like, what are you gonna do with it in the case if you don't change it?
We're just gonna let it grow up. We'll let it grow up.
Okay.
It, it, changing it from industrial to commercial just gives us better easement, 'cause we would have to be, our easements would be totally changed.
Not easements, uh, so...
Yeah, I see that.
With the new rules y'all are trying to do on fencing, because there is a residential property, I mean, it's not a zone residential, would the fencing rules play once you pass those?
You mean the screen?
Yes.
The screen that evolves into fencing once he's established. I believe, Jennifer, didn't we do that, that part, was as an as-is, where the previous property, we were just going with, uh, maybe commercial? Was it commercial for hotels?
So we were looking at, um, with commercial or industrial, uh, zoned or used property as abutting to a residential zone or used property. Currently, um, currently, you know, there's a requirement for screening. And we were, I believe that's six foot, um, in the discussion, and I think the intent of the commission is to ultimately go to eight feet.
Yes.
And to be, have more guidance in the regulations as to exactly what that screening should consist of and what the ultimate results should be related to that. So to the extent that, that any of, any of that development, you know, would abut residential property, which, but it, the interesting thing in this case, so the, the lot 16 that has the, currently has a residence on it, it's zoned C2. And so, if it all ends up being zoned C2, then there's no change in, in zone or use. And the, the use of that, the use of lot 16 have a residence on it, with it being already zoned C2, that, that basically evidences an intent of the, the planning commission of the city that ultimately that's not to be a residential lot.
Grandfather out.
Right, and so ultimately, once that stops being used as, as a residence after a certain period of time, then, then it would no longer, you know, that would no longer be a conformant use, basically.
I have a question for Andy. What, what are y'all using the Clay Street Road for?
We've parked log trucks on it, we've parked equipment, like, whenever we, so trucks have to cross over the railroad tracks. And sometimes we might have a piece of equipment coming in that cannot access right there on McNeil because of the dip over the other side of the railroad tracks. So we've had it before, we pulled out and actually cut over Clay, and then we can drop down and come back around and go into the, uh, sawmill side.
Okay, so you're, you're just using it for bigger trucks that are, I don't know.
Well, I mean, we've used it for access outside, yeah. Access back and forth just on the outside of the plant.
Right.
Depending on if there's a bunch of...
But you're not going all the way through it as a...
Well, we have to go from one end to the other, because the, the sawmill entrance is on one side, and then the floor mill entrance is on the other.
Okay, okay.
So yes, we would use it as. But, and then like they contacted us a few weeks ago and said that we would have a key to the gate to access the property, and that they would keep an open street.
For the city, I said for the city.
Sorry, you told me that we...
I know that.
You may have misunderstood me, but...
I wasn't gonna break this up again, I was just trying to clarify my own head.
You may have misunderstood me when I talked to you, but the city wants to be able to have access in case they need to get to the water line. That was what I understood. And I just, my other thing is, he can do the very same thing if he goes up on Clay Street.
Or up on Vine Street.
On Vine Street.
Which then we're pulling equipment and big trucks, that's the thing. We have, kinda like when, uh, Steve was putting in the liquor store there and wanted to have the setback and push it back. One of the things that we've, we're really concerned about is 18-wheelers being, those plants were there, and then the city was built around them. So right now, we have 18-wheelers who, they can't go through downtown because of recent law change, so they're all coming out, when, when they look, when they pull up, they have to kinda nose up, look around the liquor store if they're coming out of McNeil, or even worse, if they're at the body shop, they have to kinda nose up, and then there's a, kind of a blind curve right up there by that gas station. And so they're trying to ease up and be able to nose out. And so there's just a lot of concern on, on wrecks with 18-wheelers. So what we're trying to do is make sure too, that we don't force them and bottleneck them into a certain spot, and then end up with issues.
So I'm, I'm trying to get clear in my head though, so where, how have, how have y'all been accessing the undeveloped portion of Clay Street?
You can just drive on it.
No, have you been going from Garland Street or McNeil or the railroad? No, have you been going from Garland Street or McNeil or the railroad, or have you been?
Go from McNeil, just going across Clay, B from, uh, McNeil just right outside of the railroad track entrance to Anthony Timberlands.
So you have one part of your business on one side of Clay and the other?
And there's two businesses, there's, and I manage both of them, but Anthony Timberlands is one, and that's the old Peace Saw, or Peace Flooring, and then Duke Sawmill. Then the other one right next door that was Parte Flooring is Anthony Oak Flooring. Anthony family and company's on both of them, but, and there's not a, really a fence in between the two once you go over the railroad track.
Looks like a blank lot.
Correct, yeah, exactly, so most people, even before we purchased, uh, the property from Steve Do, the sawmill and peace flooring, everyone just assumed that it was just one contiguous business.
Ms. Calloway, you had your hand raised.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that I visited with, um, Mr. Doug Couch, that has couches collision, after I'd spoken with him, and he expressed how they'd been using the drive-through, and I, I just, cause Doug is there, he's watched what we've been doing the past ten months with clearing, I said, have you ever seen a big truck or anybody from Anthony drive through there? And he said, absolutely not, and I'm not trying to dig, I'm just saying, it's mind boggling to me that I, I just don't understand, but.
He can get affidavits from people, his workers that have driven, I can get affidavits from Brent Robertson to tell you how grown up it was, and you cannot drive across that lot.
You can see on Google Maps, if you go and look right now, you can see that you can make a pass through there. I mean, it's, it's not, he said, she said.
On a four wheeler.
So any clay cell, the clay, whether that's here or there, you do have another way to go though, if you had to? We know that's correct, right?
Uh, we can get on the, we can put oversized loads and eighteen wheelers nosing out on the Vine Street. Uh, and, you know, if that's, if you would rather have your citizens laundry mites and some extra RV spaces instead of, uh, you know, maybe some safety, then that would be your call.
Okay.
I have a question, is there not spot behind the railroad track?
That's what I'm saying, when you go over the railroad tracks on McNeil, the property dips down, so we need to be able to have on certain low boys and other eighteen wheelers. We also, we don't wanna get hung up on the railroad tracks, I mean, the, the issues I'm talking about are people getting killed. That's, that's what I'm worried about. And traffic accidents.
A railroad problem that they can fix on the other side of the.
I don't know if you've ever dealt with the railroad, but
Well.
Well, they, they don't have problems.
And I did, I did.
They don't care if it dips.
Well, I spoke with the railroad company when we started this whole process, and they, they knew that we were wanting to devote RV, and they had no concerns whatsoever. Just saying.
Yeah, I have any more concerns about each part, everyone's okay with multiple lots, rezoning part, and the three parts of it?
Say that again.
I said any more concerns?
Yeah, I think I got my questions answered.
David, anything else I missed?
Still gotta talk about all of the setbacks, the variance page.
That's a multi.
Are the, the setbacks that you're requesting, those depicted on the survey that, that was in the package?
Yes, yes.
I will say the, the requirement for the setbacks that's listed was based upon a C two zone.
Okay.
If it does not get changed to a C two zone and it stays I two, well, the I two portion has to change even greater setback required.
So, four feet to ten feet on Garland Street?
That's what they're asking.
That's a big, that's not just five feet, that's a big amount.
We misunderstood, whenever we talked to David the first time, it was, I misunderstood, I thought it was a fifteen foot variance, we're asking from fifteen to ten. We still buy ten, um, we'll take what he can give us.
That's because all of Garland, it, it's road frontage, any commercial, you have to have that setback on the road frontage.
I do know, there, the asterisk relates to if there's a setback, it says setback may be reduced to fifteen feet when parking is not placed within the setback area. Is there, is there any parking on this? It looks like, it looks like there may be parking at Vine Street. The address at Vine Street.
Yeah, this is a future, this is a future laundromat that has parking on that. Something like this area right here.
Is there parking, okay, so the laundry mat, I forget what, I forget what lot of it is. Um, is there parking within any of the rest of it, so that would be?
Not, not.
Like lot eighteen, nineteen?
Other than the boat and RV parking, no ma'am.
Okay. But like customer.
No ma'am.
Thoughts on, there's just Garland, setbacks?
I'm, got Google Earth pulled up, sorry, I'm looking at, I'm looking to see the road and everything.
Jennifer, you're required to have a certain amount of parking per street.
There are some parking requirements.
Can I ask, I just want to ask something, I ask you, what year y'all started doing between? Cause all the time I can't see the big store, I don't think we ever had any vehicles coming between there. What year did y'all start doing that?
Uh, Parte Flooring has been there since nineteen fifty, if I'm not mistaken. Peace Flooring was there probably around the same time, if I was not mistaken, uh.
I grew up there, I never remember big trucks coming through there, ever, cause we had our own big trucks, you know, their own things that they're.
I've been there since October of thirteen, and then we've, we've done several times since then. As a matter of fact, we've had to park eighteen wheelers when we're buying new, uh, equipment, floor mill, and then park them right there.
Don't you have bring on your side on, you say, how we can, McNeil to park also next to the side of the office?
Yeah, but when we're talking like buying equipment, when we had, I think, sixteen, eighteen wheelers come in from Canada, and they just all show up it was equipment numbered one through sixteen, and number one and loads first, and then number two, and then they run out.
Is it possible?
Did you see what you mean?
Yes.
Is it possible we could, like, hold that till after the, the meeting?
Thank you.
Uh, the question about parking spaces, um, Article twelve, I'm not seeing anything that specifically relates to this type of, these, the planned development. Um, but commercial establishment, not otherwise classified, is one parking space per three hundred square feet of floor space in a building. Um, and then there's also in all others, says for all other uses not covered. Uh, planning commission shall make a determination of parking demand to be created by the proposed use, and the amount of parking does determine shall be the off-street parking requirement for the permitted use.
Okay, Julie, watch out, I wanted to say, Ms. Stacy.
Oh, I just wanted to look on, I was just trying to figure out.
She was just trying to see it in, from sound like.
In the industrial, um, for your physical, um, appearance, it says that when you have outdoor storage and equipment, you have to be screened by a fence at least six feet.
We're putting a six foot silicone fence around.
Around the whole, that, this whole thing?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, where you see the, the little, little circles? That, that's fenced, that's fenced in there.
So this is all gonna have a fence around it?
Yes, ma'am.
What top or fence?
Six foot silicone fence, with razor wire on top. I gotta protect my customers' property.
Mr. Nelson, do I go this, you want me to do this from A, B, C?
You're gonna need three different bug chutes.
Okay. So looking at A.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else on the floor?
Anybody, anything else on A, combine them multiple lots into one parcel?
I'm in.
Anybody else?
Four.
Four.
Four. It was just Anthony. Four.
I didn't know if he needed, wanted to.
Are you done? Anytime a motion for A? Okay, no motion on A. Okay, B, rezoning a portion of property from I two to C two? Um, C, variance on all sides?
Okay, well, no motion for either one of these, for A, the parcel, the rezoning, I mean, the portion of the regular variance. How do you want me to word that, Jennifer?
There is no motion, um, to adopt, there are questions denied?
Doubt, lack, no motion.
There is no motion to adopt any of the recommendations from Mr. and Mrs. Calloway? No motion, I mean, it dies. Sorry about that.
Thank you for your consideration, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Ms. Becky Thomas.
Hello.
All right, all right, how are you?
Okay, tell us what you got going on.
Y'all start, I start.
You start, you win what you want.
Okay, I'm trying to put a mobile, a single wide mobile home on, um, twelve oh six Mary Bridge Road. I had a single mo- um, mobile home in that place before, um, and I was trying to put another one there.
You got grandfathered out.
Ma'am, I can't hardly, I have trouble hearing to.
Since that is no longer zoned for a mobile home, when you, um, when you remove, remove it, you can't put another one back in there.
Okay.
In other words, it's, it's been rezoned, you could stay, you could've stayed in the old one.
You would've left your one, old one there, would've stayed, but then once you move something off, then you can't.
Okay.
You grandfathered out.
And you can't also put another used one in there, I mean, it's, okay.
So currently, what the, that's the brown and white, what that's there, is it?
No, that, it's, mine was sitting in front of the one that's already there.
Okay, what the cars are, it's like two vehicles or something right there?
Right.
I don't know what other options you would have in that, in that location, cause that space is really small.
It would. There were two.
Well, I mean, it's, um, they're gonna give me the opportunity to buy the property later, but right now it's air property. It belonged to Puelo Cooper, and she willed it to, uh, two of her nephews and one of her nieces, and it's, one of them passed away, so it's kinda aired off.
Are they living in a mobile home there too?
Who?
The, the descendant.
Any of the relatives? No, ma'am, no, ma'am.
You removed it though?
Is that? I removed the old one that was there, but I live in a mobile home right now on the Brigham estate, which is some of the same heirs' property. And all of that land that's right there by Cardian Heights, they're gonna eventually sale. And I was hoping to get the area where I am, but some of the heirs wanted to, um, sell it as, maybe as a whole. So I would have to move that mobile home too, so I was hoping to move it over there. And where the, uh, where y'all changed the zone right there, it's probably not even a half a mile from being out of the city limits. And it's also on a road.
That's like a bad, that's like a.
It's the street.
That's like a storm, bad storm. All came together for you, uh, you know, because it is changed. If you own that property, the best thing that whoever owns it either sells the whole lot, because it's not, as, as each one of those mobile homes ages out, that zone is no, it doesn't remain where you can put a mobile home on it.
I mean, maybe one day I will put something else on there later on, but at the moment, that's.
But at the moment, you don't own the land.
Well, no, ma'am, but, I mean.
So what are you, with your mobile home where you are now, you have to move it?
Uh, if they do decide to sell as a whole, I may would have to move it.
And then you would have anywhere?
Not at the moment.
He would all hinge on if they would sell her all the property, which, who knows, that's why.
But it's still a hardship. It's a, maybe hardship.
I mean, it's not worthable, I mean, the only thing we really can put on the land right now is, uh, is, you know, maybe mobile homes, something you can.
But you could take, since you don't own that land, you could take your, the mobile home that you want to put on there and put it in a mobile home area, designated for mobile homes.
Uh, well, yeah, I, I mean, I could, but, I mean, I, I mean, why would I do that with all that land over there and nothing?
Because it's zoned, uh, for a mobile home, to put a mobile home in an area that's own mobile home is in your advantage to.
Well, but, but, but don't y'all let in, like, modular homes, like, homes with permanent foundation?
Modular home is a stick-built home. Mo- manufactured is not a stick-built home. Big difference in the two.
Yeah, but a lot of the mobile home places make modular, make the modular homes.
They may, but that's not what we're talking about here.
Okay, so basically, it's just not worded right, like, for as the modular homes. Uh, y'all won't build homes, like, you come in, build, site-built homes, okay.
So a modular home, you order your floor plan and everything, and they come in and they assemble it, build it on that spot, that's a modular. Manufactured.
I love them not like that.
Manu- yeah, manufactured home, like you're talking about, comes in on wheels, they take the wheels out from under it and put it, put it on.
Yeah, but I've also visited places where they sell mobile, modular homes, and they move them out the same way as they do mobile homes. They move them in.
They're not the same, uh, just.
But in this case, we would need to, because of the grandfather thing, you would maybe put that current entity, especially without, without having, you having the property of it, so it may be something you could revisit later? David, right?
You can revisit it later, yes.
Okay, with that, if you were able to get that full lot, and then you could talk about the modular.
Because you're currently living in a different home, correct? You're, would you be living in this one when you moved in?
No, actually, my daughter and my grandbaby are living in it.
So it's really not a hardship on you?
Well, I mean.
Family can be a hardship. I get it. So, I guess, Ms. Thomas, we're, we're just opening the floor to see the question, any more questions? Anybody entertain a motion?
I make a motion, we deny it. Because it's not zoned correctly.
I think if you, if things change with that property and all that stuff, maybe come back, and we'll see at that point, but I think right now, it's not. It, at this point in time, it is not a hardship. I can't, in good faith, vote to.
But it's, I mean, it's several different mobile homes in the area already, it's basically a mobile home.
If they move one out, they can't bring it back.
Same situation you're in.
They're gonna be in the same spot.
Every one of those, once they can't be lived in anymore, if they go away, and not another one come back.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion carried.
All right. Thank you.
I moved up with a drone.
Second. Meeting has been, has been moved in at under with drone, meeting at five forty-eight, all in favor? Name, motion carried.